All right, good evening. Welcome to February. I'm going to call this February 1st Sammamish Planning Commission meeting in order. Let's start out with roll call and everybody can be excited because we have a new commissioner this evening. So I'm going to start on my right, Ajay Chakrani.
Here.
John Baughman.
Here.
Mike Bresko.
Here.
I'm going to skip our new guy and come back to him in just a second. Sudrani Sunkara.
Here.
Sayad Sababian.
Here.
And I'd like to introduce Hisham El Khawad. Hisham, would you take just a minute and introduce yourself?
Hisham El Khawad, I have been a resident of Sammamish for the past eight years. I have been in the design and construction industry for about 30 years now and I've been looking for this opportunity to join the planning commission for a while and I'm grateful that the city council selected me and looking forward to participating in the making our city even more beautiful.
Great. We'll check back at you in about six months and see if you're still on board. Next, I just want to mention the meaning accessibility statement that's in the agenda and in the minutes, always take a look at that so that you can see how to see the meetings, join the meetings, watch the meetings and hopefully for those of you who may be watching at some point to provide some public comment. Okay, approval of the agenda. Are there any comments about this evening's agenda? Okay, no comments, so we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next, approval of the minutes from the January 18th meeting. Does anybody have any corrections or comments about that, set of meeting minutes? Okay, no comments, so we'll call the January 18th meeting minutes. Approved by common consent. Next is non-agenda public comment. So three minutes per person. This is anything that's a public comment not related to our agenda this evening and as a reminder, our agenda this evening includes primarily a review of the draft of the economic development element for the comp plan. So anything else, public comment, now's the time. Evan, do we, since we have no one in the room obviously, is there anybody online?
Yep, I see one hand raised. Ms. Wickter, I'll go ahead and promote you to panelist.
Hi, this is Mary Wickter, Sammamish for 23 years. I wanted to talk a little bit about happy. It's an email that I sent that I forwarded today. I'd sent it to city council in January and I said I'd send it to you guys, but I had to wait until the commissions had been formed and updated with the new people because I wanted everybody to get it. It's basically a summary of like the best stuff that I've seen in 10 years. It's from Curitiba, Brazil. It was on a happy video about how happiness gets studied and it's a happy place plus the sustainability of the city, the greenness of the city, sustainable urban planning, a green city and the things it uses are just really incredible and remarkable. So in the email, I talk about world famous Jaime Lerner, who was the mayor three times and also governor for the state of Paraná in southern Brazil. He's world known renowned as well. He, like Jane Jacobs, is a really well-known urban planner. He's second only to her. And back in the 50s, 60s, they talked about doing stuff. They finally did it by the 70s and because of that, a few young professionals made some very important changes, were determined to make the change and started at exactly the right time. And I feel like City of Sammamish is at that point now because our city incorporated in 1999. It'll be 25 years old coming up this year in August and so for 25 anniversary, I think we need to try to do things plus there's just a lot of really big projects. The comprehensive plan, the critical areas, development regulations and all the plans have been worked on for climate and everything. So I think it's very important. So I hope that each of you will take the time to read the email and look at the things. I wasn't actually able to show the DVD or from the CD, but I did take screenshots from it, so that's in the first attachment to it. But I give facts and figures. They have like a regional wastewater system that uses artificial lakes and generates power now as of 2018 to 2020. Their bus rabbit transit system is used in 300 cities across the world. So I hope some of this enticed you to be able to read that. I think it's really important for all the planning land use and things that we're doing this year. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Wickter. We have one more hand raised. Mr. Stickney, I'll go ahead and promote you to panelist.
Paul Stickney, Sammamish, welcome, new commission member. I'm going to have to hear your name a few times before I try to say it. So welcome, I heard your interview and I like the fact that you've got experience in construction and you know, design because a lot of folks, including myself, are very interested in having a very appealing design of our centers and so forth, sort of our own style that will be attractive and fit correctly. One thing coming up that I heard Mary talk and a good comment, Mary. I subscribe to a few things, but and I'm going to read this, so I'm looking away. There's a source, I'll just call it that, called 880 Cities or Cities for Everyone. And they have a seminar every two weeks and it's a worldwide event. The guy who runs it was originally from, I believe Bogota, Colombia and now he's in Toronto. But this week, and these are free, this week coming up on February 6th, that 11 Eastern, so I guess that would be ADAR time, they're having Charles Marrone, who's the founder of Strong Towns. And if you haven't looked through the Strong Towns site, it's exceptional and this is a free seminar. It may be worth a click to see if any of you have an interest on it. Not going to really speak to my non-agenda comment other than it's a, it's beginning to distill, condense, get clear, cogent and compelling in terms of what the message is. And I'll say something now that I didn't say in that is that, you know, we do have what I call false premises and these are true statements, but I look at it the other way. Our housing supplies really don't meet what our community needs over lifestyle and for future generations. And much of the foundational information that went into determining where we are in this cycle needs to be corrected and reevaluated and there's a lot of numbers missing. So if we get all that and then can compare consequences of what if we do and don't correct and add housing for life, I think we can have a much better comp plan and all be on the same page. Anyway, appreciate the opportunity and I'll enjoy hearing how things transpire tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. That was the last of our comments.
Okay, thanks to Paul and Mary both. So now we'll get to our new business on the agenda. The super exciting first item on the list is selection of chair and vice chair. So just as a reminder or a refresher, every year in our first real meeting at this point, we do a selection of chair and vice chair. The way it works is somebody provides a nomination. We don't really need a second, we just need a nomination. If there's more than one, then what I will do is take a vote in that order and whoever is elected first, for obvious reasons, is selected as chair and then we'll do vice chair second. So not too complicated, but just as a reminder how it goes. So let's start out with chair. Anybody super excited to sit in this chair in the middle here?
I was going to nominate you.
That's what I was afraid of, Ajay. Should I encourage you first? I'm glad we're going to do this before the work plan for the year because that might talk something out of it, but I want to just give an opportunity. I am, what I said before, I'll say again, I am, and if you get nominated, I'll give you two minutes or one minute or whatever to just say whether you're willing or not because sometimes somebody gets nominated and they're not willing, so we want to recognize that. So if you're nominating me, I'll say that I am happy to continue if that's what people want, but I have no like desperate need to sit here and talk on cable channel 21 either. So I'm happy to step.
I'll second the motion.
And let somebody else. Are you sure there's nobody else? All those in favor of Mark Baughman remaining as chair, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right. So who wants to be vice chair or who would like to nominate someone to be vice chair?
I'm willing to continue serving as vice chair.
I would nominate Mike. I'll nominate Mike.
All right, anyone else? Okay, so Mike Bresko for vice chair, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Looks like you guys like stability. So we're going to continue as we were. It's a great planning commission, a great team, so I'm glad to be here and you guys make it easy on me, so thank you and we will keep on keeping on. Next item on new business is Deputy Director Kelly Hildy is going to provide a planning commission work program overview for the year, which I'm surprised that I've heard that that's a pretty heavy lift. Ooh. Kelly, are you doing it?
Yes, I am. I thought I was second on the agenda and I was just reminded I am first. So here we go. We'll make this quick and hopefully painless. Evan is going to run the presentation for me. David is also online. I have already tagged him to interrupt me freely if I miss important points on our work program. Overall, it is going to be a very busy year, especially January through August. As you all know, because I think we've been preparing for this for a while, this is the year of our periodic update to our comprehensive plan. And along with that mandate, there are other projects that are also mandated to be completed this year. Projects that we knew were coming and some new projects that the legislature implemented or enacted in 2023 that this team has been responding to and preparing to make those necessary changes. So let's get right into it. We're going to start with the comprehensive plan and associated code amendments. You will start to review the draft comprehensive plan. So all of this work, when did we start, Evan? Did we start in 2022? We've been having a lot of conversations about this comp plan. So now you're going to get to see the results of all the community engagement, all of the feedback we received from the planning commission as well as the city council. Special bonus, we have a middle housing ordinance that's a part of that. That would be in response to House Bill 1110. And then there has been a lot of conversations about that as well. So reviewing the plan, reviewing the associated development regulations that need to be updated to respond to the plan's update. You cannot have a comp plan that conflicts with your code. So that work is coming really quick next month. It's going to, we're going to get introduction and you're going to get a link to the, to those materials. So you'll see that on March 7th. Okay, next. A fairly new project added to our work program. This was introduced to you all back in October when we had a conversation, a joint meeting with our city council to talk about the town center plan and code amendments. The purpose of this work is really to accommodate more affordable and diverse housing as required by House Bill 1220. The town center was identified as our focus area, not to take on all of our affordable housing allocation, but a portion of it because it is a subarea that one, already exists. We have a plan, two, we have development regulations. It is the subarea that includes inclusionary zoning, which already has affordability requirements. So doing some fine tuning, working with our stakeholders, our community and staff to identify those areas within our code that are barriers to getting affordable housing. Because we're looking at increasing the cap that's already established today, which is 2,000 units and 400,000 square feet of commercial space, it will require us to do a supplemental EIS, which is a large environmental study. This is a project that has a lot of work, a lot of tasks and needs to be done in a very short order. So we have been working away behind the scenes. We are keeping Jeff at Framework very, very busy this year and he is our consultant working on this project. And he will be up to talk about economic development or economic element here shortly. Okay, next. Oh, you will, we will be introducing the project scope of work as approved by city council last November. We'll be presenting that on February 15th as well as really focusing on our priorities and having that discussion on the focus of this work and the priorities of this work. Next, the transportation master plan is back and this is one that staff is working on currently. You will be reviewing a draft of that plan this spring. It will be introduced on March 7th with work sessions in April and a public hearing in June. The TMP will be completed as part of the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. So again, having that alignment between large policy documents is really essential. Again, it's efficient and coordinating that work is really important. Let's go to the next slide. Because we have so many heavy projects, we thought we would add a light one to the list and that's the critical areas ordinance update. You all got a preview of that just last month. It is, and I'm joking about it being a light project, it is a lot of technical information. It obviously is a high priority here in the city especially. There is going to be quite a few meetings on this ordinance update. So this will be back to you on March 21st and then in June with a public hearing in July. Next slide. The transfer of development rights program. Excuse me. If we could create a logo for the transfer of development rights program, it would be an octopus because this project has so many tentacles on all the other projects happening this year, including the comp plan, the town center plan, the critical areas plan and I already said town center, right? Who am I missing? David, am I missing someone? But I feel like every time we talk about our transfer of development rights program update, we are talking about how it coordinates with all of these other projects.
No, that's, you're right. It's the catalyst of all the projects that basically brings everything together in the end and implements things, right? It allows us to protect sensitive areas. It allows us to protect certain community attributes and it allows us to move density where we want it in the right, you know, at the right type of density, so the right type of housing in the right place.
But really to do that work and the first piece that we have to start on is updating our interlocal with King County and which will allow us to really free our inner in-city TDR program. So really the timing on this is going to be interesting. We're going to actually introduce the project in a phased approach to updating the code, but it will start with the interlocal agreement, which that work will happen through the city council and the King County council first. So it will, the interlocal agreement will not be coming to the planning commission. But while we're doing that work with council and King County, we will be making progress on all of those other projects associated with the TDR program, like I mentioned, town center, the comp plan and the critical areas ordinance. And we actually want to get through a bulk of that work first before we even think about updating the TDR code. So for us, phase one is going to be the ILA and that's, we're starting to work with King County right now. Our goal is to get that ILA adopted or approved through both councils by the summer recess, so by August. And then at that point, we're going to start focusing on the code updates. So this actually will start coming to you probably in October, November and December. I mislabeled August and September there. That will actually be our time where we're going to be working behind the scenes to propose those amendments in response to the other work happening beforehand. Okay, next. Okay, streamlining permit review. So this is another mandate from the state in response to 5290. This is requiring cities to really update their review timelines for land use permits, to clarify the determination of completeness process, to really find a streamlined process to get these land use applications approved in a reasonable amount of time and they are keeping us to these very strict timelines. If we do not meet our timelines, we may be required to refund a portion of the permit fee back to the applicant. So a lot of work is happening behind the scenes through administrative process improvements. We actually just had a huge kaizen event with our staff a couple of weeks ago to look at ways that we can be more efficient with our reviews. Avril is going to be here on March 21st to give you an overview of how that all worked and the outcomes of that kaizen event. And if anyone is familiar with the kaizen process, it is all process improvement. It's an intense process staff went through, but I think we're going to get some really great results out of that. But it's not only about just updating our administrative process, it's about updating the code. And so these will be very prescriptive updates. We will be bringing that to the planning commission in April. It will be a presentation again on those specific updates and a public hearing on the same night since this is, it's a large party of work and we don't have any, a choice. If we don't adopt the new review timelines, we'll have to fall back on the state and so the state will force us to do it regardless. So that one is exciting and a thank you to the state for that. Okay, next, let's go to stormwater code amendments. There are some minor technical updates to the Sammamish addendum as part of the 21 King County Surface Water Design Manual. This is mostly focused on LID, including reducing restrictions for BMP implementation such as rain gardens, rain garden requirements, noting that LID facilities cannot be shared between individual lots for maintenance and clarify when PIT versus falling head tests are required to measure infiltration rates. Now, I hope no one will question me on what PIT and falling head tests are because I do not have the answer. These are notes from the public works team and we will save those questions for May 2nd when they are going to be here to present those amendments. Next, our annual docket process. For those who've been on the planning commission for some time, Chair Baughman, you are very familiar with our annual docket process and this is a process that allows the public to request updates to our regulations and our comprehensive plan. This process usually starts in August. We will, we have a joint meeting with the city council on October 1st to review any requests and what those are is yet to be determined. I believe applications are due the first Monday in August. So just to conclude this presentation, this is an overview of our work program. Not only do these timelines indicate when things are coming to the, or when projects are coming to the planning commission for review and recommendation or their public hearing process, it also identifies the time where staff is actually behind the scenes preparing materials. This is a heavy lift. Staff spend a lot of time not only drafting this work with their consultants or sometimes that work is done in-house, but it's also preparing the presentation materials and the packet materials and pulling together questions to receive that type of, receive the feedback needed from the planning commission so you can do your deliberation and make your recommendation to the city council. If you can click the next button. Like I mentioned, you will notice that we are, we have, the work program is really heavy from January to July and that is a very strategic move on staff's part. Planning commission is the first phase. It is, it is reviewing the draft materials. You all, as you know, do a lot of the vetting, working through the materials, directing staff on updates, the community provides their comments. This is, you know, this is, this is where we kind of roll up our sleeves and get to work. And we conclude that with a public hearing and a recommendation, as I mentioned earlier, to our city council. We do really need that August break to start the next phase of work, which is the noticing. So every one of these projects will require a non-project SEPA, there are requirements to get that notice out and also we need to notice the Department of Commerce. So we spend a lot of time, we spend the August break, sometimes not on vacation, we spend it doing some of that administrative behind the scenes work with our requirements for noticing and environmental review and then preparing to take your recommendation to city council in the fall. And because this is such a heavy work program, we really do need all four months, September to December, to get this work through city council. This is also the year we'll be working on our two-year budget. So I do feel for city council this year, they're going to have a lot coming to them in the fall. So we want to do this upfront work with the planning commission the first eight months of the year or seven months of the year. With that, if you're not tempted to get up and leave at this moment, I will welcome any questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Ajay. Thank you, Chair. I just have one question. Why is the TDRs so late? Shouldn't we move this a little forward because I am worried that the TDRs and the annual docket are both at the same time, making it rather inflexible.
Actually, so we really can't get going on updating the TDR code itself until we have a really good draft of our critical areas ordinance and also our town center plan and code amendments. Those are the two drivers where TDRs is a huge influence and so we don't want to get, we don't want to start that work any earlier because we don't want to get ahead of those two projects. We also need to get an amended ILA done before we start work on the TDR program. The good news is your fall is looking a lot lighter than your winter, spring and summer. So I, we will have capacity on the planning commission to do this work in the fall.
So you think that the TDR and the annual docket and any changes that might come out of one into the other is manageable?
You never know, but we will adjust if needed.
Got it, thank you.
John Digism?
So just a sort of process question. It doesn't look like we're going to get to the point where we're going to hand off, he recommended comprehensive plan in total to the council. That's going to be done at element at a time?
Actually, I'm going to let Evan answer that question.
Yeah, I'll take a stab at answering it and Jeff, if you want to chime in at all. But our goal is when we review the plan, the comp plan with the commission is to look at it as a packet, as a whole, kind of like we did at the October 24th workshop back in the fall. So when we come in March, we'll be presenting, giving an overview presentation of how we got to where we are with the plan, the input we heard, the requirements by the state that we've tried to meet and then kind of give you some guidance on how we hope you'll review the plan between March and April. And then when we come back in April, we'll start digging into that review and hear your feedback from that review period. Our hope is to look at it as a whole entity because I think there were a lot of folks who commented, commented during the October 21st workshop that it was really helpful to see it all together, to see how policy is woven and out of each element. So the goal So the goal is to review it all together and then recommend a whole complete package to the council in July, the end of July.
Thanks. Just a suggestion for your timeline here, maybe put a little flag at the end where it's going to go to council.
Yes, if you want to, yeah, I would say all of that work that is concluding in July, at that point, it's moving towards City Council. Now, transfer development rights, I will comment on that. We probably will not be getting to City Council with the final amendments to the Transfer of Development Right Code until early 2025, but that work will be, we'll be bringing that to you in the fall, for sure. So Planning Commission will work on that, and then in 2025, it will go to City Council, the annual docket. Again, depending on what we receive, we are typically, the process there is we always do a joint meeting with the City Council, and then it comes to you for a public hearing, and then it goes to City Council. It's a very streamlined process. So that will conclude by the end of the year. The only one that's going to keep moving forward will probably be transfer development rights.
Anyone else? Sayed?
Number of questions. Let's start with the, to the best of understanding is that when you look at the comp plan, you have number of elements. You have transportation element, you have open space element, you have design element, urban design element, and so forth. Let's pick up one, transportation. You mentioned about the master plan, transportation master plan. Is that all that we're getting as far as satisfying the state requirement for, as far as transportation element?
So you can, there are two components to the transportation element. In Samamish, we call them volume one and volume two. So volume one of each of our elements contains the goals and policies. So that will be one component that you'll review with the comprehensive plan, and then sort of separately on its own track, but in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, you'll look at the transportation master plan, and that is kind of, that will build up the second component of the element, or volume two, which provides the required background information, analysis on level of service, project lists. So there's volume one, goals and policies, and then volume two, which is state required background information, and then which, which we will be building upon to build out a transportation master plan. Is that clear?
Yes, that was clear to me, but is it, is there any follow-up questions?
Yeah, we speak this all the time.
Yeah.
Right. Is it possible for the next meeting, whenever you come back for, can you maybe prepare some graphics and showing the elements? What is included? Because you brought up a number of things that I'm not sure where would fit as far as the state requirements as an element of the comp plan. Is it possible to put something in graphic form that shows?
Yeah, actually, I think that will all be something that we, we present on March 7th when we introduce, when we begin our formal review with the Planning Commission of the comp plan.
That would be very helpful.
We'll make sure we break it out and help explain which, what's in it.
Are we on time overall as far as the completion of the comp plan?
Yeah, I would say that we're actually in a, in a good spot with the comprehensive plan, a big thanks to the work that we did last year. As you'll recall, we spent a lot of time talking about land use and housing last year, and those are, that's kind of the crux of the problem, is how do we deal with accommodating our housing requirements and answering some of those land use questions? So we did a lot of the heavy lifting last year. We've spent the fall and winter incorporating that work and the feedback we heard from the community and the workshop, and have been drafting. And I think by the time you see something in March, you'll, you'll be pleasantly surprised at how complete it looks and how well it incorporates all of the feedback we heard.
What is a drop deadline to submit to the state?
December 31st of 2024.
And a drop deadline to, to be adopted, that would be a few weeks before then, right? So are you optimistic? I'm trying to find out, are we optimistic?
Yeah.
That we meet the state requirement as far as the deadline?
Can I?
Yeah, go for it.
Can I jump in here as well?
Yep.
Yeah, so there's a couple other stops along the way before transmission to state for review and certification. For example, this year, which is new this year, King County now has a role in reviewing the comprehensive plan, specifically the housing element. But in order for them to understand the housing element, they do also need to see the other elements as, you know, peripheral and how they all fit together. So one of the reasons why it's really important that we get this in front of you in March and start working through the different elements is so that we can provide it to King County with adequate time for them to perform their review and provide their comments on it, because at this time, PSRC, who is the, the agency, the, the regional planning authority agency that ultimately approves the plan, or certifies the plan, if you will, is going to be looking for comments from King County indicating that King County is satisfied with our housing element. So that is a big addition that we didn't have in past cycles of updates. There are also other things that are layered in there that, that we don't need to get into the details on, but there's, this is quite a work, work plan, and we're really confident about where we stand with it, but it's still very aggressive, and we really can't allow for delay. That's one of the reasons why transfer development rights is moved down the line a little bit, because transfer development rights are not essential for the comp plan to be adopted and to be, to be certified. Transfer development rights are, are more of a, a, an add-on, or a, what's the right word for it, like a, like an enhancement to the plan as to how everything fits together? Think of transfer development rights as the catalyst that makes everything work when we try and implement it at the end. So we're going to wait a little bit to learn about our comp plan, we're going to wait a little bit to learn about critical areas, we're going to wait a little bit to learn about our town center, and what we're going to do after we've learned about all those is we're going to look at how transfer development rights can actually make it all come together at the end. So that's one of the reasons why that program has moved down the line. That's not to say that we're not already working, as Kelly said, with King County, because we have an inter-local agreement. King County is an agency that has a lot of experience with transfer development rights. So we're looking to them to help us, you know, continue to grow our program, to look at different opportunities, and, and then we're going to look internally to the city at how we could have our own program that might work really well with the King County program. So I hope that's enough information. Don't want to overwhelm you on that, but there's a lot going on here, and I'm really appreciative of this team that you have in front of you here, there in the room, and Jeff here, who's, who's always with me in the ether, to, at the work they've done, pull this all together. It's, it's not an easy puzzle to solve, and the fact that we are where we are is a testament to the, to the fact that they are committed to this, and they're, they're working double time trying to figure this out.
In a local agreement, do we have any other participants other than King County?
No, it's, it's an agreement between the city and King County alone.
We don't need to have any local agreement with adjacent jurisdictions?
At this time, no. We may be, one of the items we may be looking at is maybe expanding the sending sites within King County, but really it is county properties that are addressed in the interlocal as sending sites. Other jurisdictions that hasn't come up as a point of interest from City Council as an area to focus on.
I brought up this question before, sub-area plan, and you guys, you told me that we have only one recognized sub-area plan, which is a town center. Where and how and when we're going to get into the sub-area plan? Is that a part of the comp plan update, or it's going to be a separate part of the process?
Yeah, it will be introduced in the comp plan, and then depending on the outcome of the comp plan, that work will start after adoption, and that will all be determined by the City Council when they would want us to work on other sub-area plans, if that is what is adopting the comp plan.
And at what stage, what is the timeframe to engage us in a discussion of land use and zoning?
Well, I think that's coming up real soon.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would all be part of the conversations that we have in March and April. I would also say that a bulk of those conversations, you know, happened last year, and what, much of what you see will be derived from the conversations direction we got last year. So hopefully there aren't any big surprises when we roll out the plan in, in March and April, but certainly it's a time to talk and continue to that conversation.
Thanks very much.
If I can add to that, I mean, with the comp plan itself, we, we have been working on that since 2022 with the Planning Commission, with the City Council, and I, I feel why we are going to be successful in meeting that deadline is because we've gotten this incremental direction early on, and we've been continuing to build on that and getting affirmation that that is the direction we need to be moving, especially at that October 21st workshop. So you're going to see all of that come together starting on March 7th, so it should be very exciting. I do want to mention one caveat with this work plan. Your timeline, meeting dates are always subject to change, and that may be because there are things outside of our control. We may need to introduce an extra meeting here or there. As soon as those project timelines are finalized, I will be letting you all know for sure when those meetings are. I will also be sending out, again, once we get those timelines finalized, the dates of the public hearings, because those are so important that we have a quorum, and so that you, you can, you know, take the feedback from the community, you can deliberate and make a recommendation to City Council. So again, I do want to get those dates out to you guys sooner than later, because we are looking at those public hearings being in the summer. I do, we need to know if we're, if we're not going to have a quorum. We're going to have to work around that. So there will be some collaboration with you all on that as well.
So my last question has to do with the number of major projects that you guys came and, and got input from us, climate action plan, housing element, and also later on, we're going to talk about economic development. Are these, they going to be an element, are these, they going to be elements of the comp plan?
You go right ahead.
Yeah, so new with this comp plan cycle, we're introducing two new elements, the climate change and resiliency element and an economic development element. So, yep, the work that we did last year, talking about both of those topics, will be interwoven into the, the comp plan review. Was there one more you mentioned?
Housing action plan?
Yes, the housing action plan, also that will be kind of woven into the policies you'll see in the housing element.
Thank you.
And all of those, both of those documents, the climate action plan and the Housing Diversification Toolkit, as it's known now, those will be dynamic references in the comp plan, so they will be linked, just like the Urban Forest Management Plan, the TMP. Prose Plan. What other policies? Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, we've accomplished a lot, and we still have a lot to accomplish, and it's going to be a lot of work this year. We're going to have a lot to celebrate come December. I can't wait for that end-of-the-year review. And that potluck. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
I have one, one question. Sorry, I just have one follow-up question because, based on what you told Commissioner Seferian. The, you said that the sub-area plan is part of the, is coming after the comp plan and code updates? Shouldn't we call that out over here, because it looks like that could be in midsummer, right?
That is actually the town center plan and code amendments. That's the sub-area plan, yes.
It's covered in the town center plan and code amendments.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good, cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly and Evan. I liked how you slipped in very casually, adding extra meetings. That was quietly mentioned, very nice. And I am still a little stuck on the comment about commissioners that have been around a long time. I think I, I think I heard something different than what you said about how much you've enjoyed working with those people, but okay, we'll move on.
I do enjoy working with you all. Very much so. You guys are the best.
I will say that, two quick things. One, I'd encourage anybody who hasn't done it in a while to pull out the existing comp plan and flip through it, you know, and you know, do a memorization exercise, but just be reminded of what's in there, the elements, the components, so that then when we talk about the new one, you can kind of reference back to what the existing one is. The other thing I'll just say is, we've had this discussion about the work plan many times in the past, since I've been around for a long time, and we've never had it take half an hour. So that ought to give you some, or, yeah, half an hour. So that'll give you some idea of what we've got ahead of us this year. Okay, so let's keep things moving here and move on to our next and primary item for this evening, which is a review of the working draft of the economic development element for the comp plan. And Jeff Arango, I think you're, Jeff, going to present this, so invite you, Jeff, to go ahead and take it away.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chair Baughman. Good evening, commissioners. Good to be with you again. It's been a little while, but as David said, we've been working away on the comp plan, and we're excited to share the economic development draft with you this evening. So share my screen. Okay. So this is the listing of the elements, and tonight we're covering economic development, which is the first element that we're going to be previewing. In your packet, I believe, was volume one. We also have volume two, which I believe you reviewed previously and is on our website, project website in the economic development profile, but we have also created a print version of that document as well. So these are the items we're going to cover this evening, and we look forward to getting your input and feedback along the way. So really foundational to the comp plan is the updated vision statement, which was an extensive process with the commission, the council, and the community. And we're really working hard to kind of make sure that the vision is woven throughout each of the elements, that everything we're doing within our goals and policies and actions is really supporting this community-driven vision, and so we're trying to represent that different ways through the elements. But just wanted to, to highlight the vision again, once more for you tonight. This graphic shows how the 10 vision strategies connect to each of the elements. The larger dots indicate a stronger connection, and we have some other visuals that we'll share with you at the end of the presentation that communicate the connection between the vision statement and the goals, policies, strategies, and eventually actions that will result from the plan. And you can see the economic development element is highlighted all the way over on the right. So economic development element is technically a required or mandatory element. However, there's provisions under state law that until the state provides funding for cities to implement it, it's not technically required. So this will be the city's first economic development element, and you can see it's also goal number five for the Growth Management Act. So it definitely receives some attention, and I think is an exciting opportunity for the city to be more intentional about its efforts around economic development, and definitely something we heard strongly from the community, very much a desire to see the town center develop, the mixed-use centers continue to develop, perhaps establishing some of the neighborhood centers that are kind of set up in the comp plan but have not formally been established yet. So I think there's a lot of kind of coalescing that's happened around some of these strategies that are woven throughout each of the elements. So we had a very successful workshop on October 21st, and this is one of the graphics that we shared at that workshop. And so just kind of summarizing what some of the big themes or elements are within economic development. We heard from the community, they want to see more variety of retail, restaurant, entertainment experiences, you know, basically just more things to do, more opportunities to see your friends and neighbors have social experiences, access to arts and culture, really important, and understand the city's going to be moving forward with an art plan, which is fantastic opportunities to expand economic opportunities for youth in Samamish, whether that's, you know, while they're in high school or college, but also later in life if they so desire to stay in Samamish and invest in Samamish. And encouraging neighborhood serving services and amenities, really the concept of new neighborhood centers is something that will play out over time, but it, you know, will over time provide greater access to amenities within neighborhoods and not require, you know, always getting in the car or driving longer distances, as is currently the case for many. So we got a lot of great input at the workshop, and I just want to hit on some of the themes that came out of that. So focus on smaller local businesses for both economic development and arts and culture, and there's been many studies, including some we've done locally with communities, that show the really powerful economic opportunities that arts and culture provide, and I expect that would be the same in Samamish. Looking at opportunities for business incubators to help local entrepreneurs get off the ground. I'm sure there's, you know, many talented people in the community that would have an interest in investing in Samamish if there were those opportunities available. Really emphasizing the mixed-use areas where commercial and residential development can happen seamlessly and centered around community gathering spaces, which, you know, is, is really largely the vision for the town center, and I think over time will become more of the strategy in the other mixed-use centers as well. Emphasis on parks, which is one of the strongest assets in the communities, but, in the community, but we want to make sure, you know, it's still a priority. But we want to make sure, you know, it's still a priority going forward. And then making sure that development should serve the needs of the existing community first. Economic engines do not match the existing population level. Desire to have better broadband infrastructure and putting amenities close to where people live and can capture economic productivity. And I think the land use plan is going to continue to expand opportunities for that to happen. So some of the policy direction that came out of the workshop was striving for economic development that matches the increasing cultural diversity of the community. Develop new mixed use areas to serve as economic and cultural hubs. And we have several mixed use areas that, to the question earlier, the city's planning to do further sub area planning around. And then work from home is here to stay. And I think the data is kind of backing that up, maybe not at the levels it was seen during the pandemic, but definitely a longer term trend that we want to be mindful of and plan for in Sammamish. So since this is the first element that we're going to be previewing, there are some similar components within each element. And we spent some, quite a bit of time kind of thinking through the hierarchy of the policy part of the plan. And so at the top will be goals. And those are general statements around the desired outcome for the community. And then at the next level, we have two pieces. Policy, which are kind of broad statements of regulatory intent, derived from community goals and used to guide both the text of regulations and as a basis for discretionary decisions. So if you're, you know, looking at a project or considering something at the city level, the comprehensive plan is really meant to be a policy document that can inform decision-making. And if the policies are misaligned with the direction the community would like to go on a particular issue, then the comp plan should be amended in order to do that and go through a process as part of that. Strategies are similar to policies, but they're plans for getting from the current state to the conditions outlined in a goal or policy. So they're a little bit more action oriented. And those would likely, you know, change over time as the plan is updated and things are accomplished. And then actions are the more specific steps, measures and activities directed to achieve goals, policies and strategies. And I think what we've determined, at least internally, and we'd love to get the commission's feedback, is that we're going to locate the actions in a separate work plan, almost like a capital improvement plan for capital projects, but something that can be updated annually, communicated to elected and appointed officials about the progress, as well as the broader community. And this provides some more flexibility. It doesn't require a comp plan update every time you want to update it. And it also include a lot of detail that you wouldn't necessarily want to put in your comp plan for a variety of reasons. So we think this is a really good strategy. And again, we really want to set this up for implementation. We're only going to be successful if over the next 20 years, we're able to implement the many great things that the community would like to see. So we're now going to go into the goals, policies and strategies. And just as a reminder, I believe the commission has seen an earlier version of this. I think even prior to the goal and policy workshop, but we also did include it in the packet of materials. And I think this first goal and supporting policies and strategies is really important. And I think, I want to note that this is really a first step of identifying economic development activities as being a priority for the city. But if this is the only thing the city does, it's not really going to be successful. So this first goal really looks at establishing a dedicated economic development program within the city's organizational structure, aimed at fostering sustainable economic growth, diversifying the local economy and enhancing the overall economic well-being of the community. And so there should be follow-on processes to kind of flush that out and identify in more detail next steps and measurable goals and benchmarks to track the progress. So again, this is the first step in creating an economic development program. And there's going to be further discussions about what that looks like. Does that include dedicated staff, resources? What sort of connections with other organizations in the city? What are our primary, you know, strategies that we're going to use to achieve our goals? Those types of things. The next one really talks about some of the goals of the community and what I described earlier and some of the themes that came out of the workshop. More retail, more restaurants, more cultural experiences, social amenities, places that are fun, green and walkable. And so this one really is about setting up the future sub area planning and other actions related to the mixed use centers. So we're diving in on the town center now and the other centers will follow upon completion of the comp plan. Again, another goal and strategy around the town center and mixed use centers, the importance of providing infrastructure and amenities. And again, the infrastructure piece is another thing that will be threaded through other elements like the Capital Facilities Plan. We need to invest in public spaces, public art, cultural hubs and recreational amenities to enrich community life. Certainly great to collaborate and expect amenities to be developed by private entities as part of development proposals. But these are also things that need to be city or public investments as well. Prioritize investments in transportation and digital connectivity to improve business operations and access. ED goal four, support and grow local businesses already in Sammamish. So we want to have a full range of services. I know there's many that would like to see a hardware store come back. And, you know, there are ways to do that. I worked with a community who lost their grocery store. And through a concerted effort, we're able to get one to come back to the community so it can be done. We want to establish really strong partnerships, such as with the Chamber of Commerce. We want to support the public sector, private businesses and nonprofits to leverage resources and expertise for economic development projects. We want to have affordable commercial space and allow in-home businesses, education and training programs through cooperative planning efforts, and then the Business Incubator Program, which we mentioned earlier. And then attract desired businesses in Sammamish through strategies and partnerships. So again, it could be things like the hardware store or other things. In the case of the grocery store example I used a few minutes ago, you know, we hired a market expert to do a market study and then use that to attract a local grocery store provider. And that was very successful. Having a branding strategy to enhance the city's image as a desirable location for business and investment, I think is really important. Signaling that the business, the city is a willing partner with the private sector can be a really powerful tool in and of itself to attract investment. And then, of course, we want to foster public and private partnerships as part of our implementation strategy. And then we want to plan for work from home needs, including service and amenities within neighborhoods to support workers. So, you know, if you're spending all day at the office and are only home at the evening, that's kind of a different proposition than being there all day and the needs associated with that. So we're trying to plan for that, the new normal around that. And this also ties in with the whole idea of the neighborhood centers, which have been loosely identified on the future land use map. ED seven, expand economic opportunities for youth in Sammamish to create roots in Sammamish. We want affordable and diverse housing options. So those folks are able to come back to Sammamish and afford a place to live. Design and implement resiliency planning and responsive service programs. Okay, last piece of the presentation. This is something that you'll see in all of the elements. And it goes back to what I said at the beginning of the presentation, which we want to make sure that everything we're doing is really to achieve the community's vision in these 10 vision strategies. So these little diagrams that we put together kind of show how each of the goals in the element connect to each of the vision strategies. And so in some cases, it'll be completely blank. There's no connection and that's intentional. Not every goal is going to touch on every vision strategy. So that doesn't necessarily mean a weakness. And then these other are sort of gradients of connections, one, two and three. And so the wheel shows each of the 10 strategies and then the colors kind of highlight the connections. So it's a way to kind of display graphically. So I'll just kind of flip through these fairly quickly. First goal has a very strong connection to nine and 10, which is supporting local businesses and entrepreneurship and establishing fiscal sustainability and diversified revenues. Also, a very strong connection on number six, which talks about job opportunities and access to work in Sammamish. And then two and three on strategies five and seven. Oops. The second goal has very strong on eight, which is related to the town center and mixed use districts, medium connection to nine and 10. A weak connection to two and three, but does have some relationships around developing a multimodal transportation system, which is an important component of a strong economic city. And then you can see some of the other connections around four and five, related to inclusive, connected and safe neighborhoods and providing a variety of housing choices to support a wide array of lifestyles. All right, ED goal three, which is around the town center and mixed use centers, very strong on nine, 10, eight, nine and 10, which are really the economic development strategies, but also some connections to the sustainable natural and built environment strategies and the equitable social environment, which is great to see how these things really do interrelate. ED goal four, which is around growing local businesses, mostly aligned with nine and 10, as well as number eight and number six to a lesser degree. ED goal five, very strongly connected to number nine, lesser connection with eight and 10, and then one for connection to strategy six. ED goal six, we have a two connected to strategy nine, which is support local businesses and entrepreneurship, but also some connection to natural and built environment and equitable and social environment. And seven, actually a fairly strong connection to number six, which is connecting jobs and diverse job opportunities and access to work in Sammamish. And then a one on the rest of the other economic development vision strategies. And that is the conclusion of our presentation. I'd be happy to refer back to any slides and turn it back over to Chair Bachmann to facilitate the discussion.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm just going to open it up right off the bat to questions and comments. Jay, you got your light on? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you Chair. A great presentation, Jeff. Can you go to slide number 19?
Yeah, sure.
I think I got that right. We'll see if I got that right, 19 or 20. I don't remember that right now. I just got it up.
I'm sorry, which slide?
19.
19, okay, sure. Yeah, there you go.
Yes, so here in this thing, bring the community together, planning, designing and delivering a range of retail, restaurant and cultural, social activities. Why is sustain natural environment and reduce climate impacts? That is number one, not at all over here. Because wouldn't that have an impact on it as we try to get into ways of transportation? And that'll go to slide number 20 as well. Because even in 20, it didn't have anything for that. With the Climate Action Plan, wouldn't that make an impact as we are looking ahead for that? To say that there's just nothing there caught my eye.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's fair. And, you know, these, you know, designations are a little bit subjective. I mean, we do have a connection to number two and three, which are in those topics and I think related to that. But I, you know, I think you make a valid point of highlighting one as well, mainly for the walkability and some of the green aspects of that goal. So we can certainly take another look at that.
Yes, because that will give an action item to say that, hey, we need to improve that. We need to get, get it over there. And that this has an impact on the future. And that's what will line it up along with the Climate Action Plan. So I definitely agree just to put something in that.
Great, appreciate that.
Who else? Sayed?
Number of questions, Jeff. Can you tell us if the city is, what is the word that I'm looking for? Can you talk a little bit about enterprise zones as part of economic development? As you know, federal guidelines applies to certain areas that you can call enterprise zone and take advantage of the taxes that you can collect.
Yeah, there's some different terms for that. What I am more familiar with in Washington was called Economic Opportunity Zones, which I think is the same thing that you're referring to. And it's essentially a, you know, preferential tax situation to support economic development. I am aware of at least one community that we worked with that did have those designations in the area where we were doing a project. So I could kind of refer back to that. I believe there was a designation of those a couple of years ago. So I'd need to refresh my knowledge of that. But let me, let us take a look at that. We can bring that back. And that, you know, could be something that we could definitely look at.
Jeff, can you also talk about smart growth? Would that apply? Would that be something that you want to look at in the context of the economic development?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's really highly related to the comment we just received about the connection between walkable, fun, green environments and, you know, reductions of climate impacts. So, you know, I think smart growth is really kind of embedded already in the vision and existing plan for the Sammamish Town Center. And I think that's something that we can also bring to the future planning for some of the other mixed use centers. But yeah, smart growth is really around, you know, integrated development that provides options to walk, drive, ride your bike, access to services, multiple land uses in close proximity. So I think there's definitely some elements of smart growth that are naturally embedded in here, even if we haven't necessarily used that term directly.
Also, I'm sure that you agree with me that there's a strong relationship between economic development and adequacy of infrastructure, particularly transportation. In one slides, you made all, made reference indirectly to transportation as a prioritize, right? And establish, make sure that you have infrastructure to support and expand economic development. That is something that you need really to look at.
Yeah, and, and I think the point you're also trying to make is that the cost of infrastructure is much more affordable in a smart growth environment. And actually, the, the map, the extruded map that we had of land values, I think is in Volume 1. I know it is in Volume 2, but that kind of gets at that issue. You know, if you have sort of low intensity development spread out over a larger land area, much more expensive and costly to be able to provide services to. So yeah, definitely very important aspect of smart growth.
I didn't hear, I didn't see any reference to the importance of the land use and zoning as part of economic development. Can you, can you elaborate on it? Why it's not there? I can't see that.
Yeah, so I mean, all the elements really do need to work together. And I think one thing we were mindful of is trying not to really duplicate content among the elements, but make sure that it's connected. So we do have, for example, things in here that talk about the importance of the town center and the mixed use centers. But the actual more specific stuff around like future sub area planning and land use issues is really in the land use element. And so once you receive this in March in a full package, I think you'll be able to see kind of how these things fit together. So that was kind of by design, that it, you know, some of these things don't show up as strongly in one element versus the other. But we're also happy to take feedback. And if you think we need to increase our attention to a specific topic, we're happy to make updates.
Also, can you talk a little bit about the importance of having a czar, somebody, staff to be in charge of economic development and kind of market the city?
Yeah, so I mean, it really does have to be someone's responsibility, you know, to run the program. And I would say it's not too dissimilar from the city recently hiring the Sustainability Coordinator. Not sure the official title, but that role to implement the Climate Action Plan, right? And so I think economic development is kind of the same. I think, you know, clearly it can be right sized to the city's activities. But, you know, again, this needs to be a programmatic element of the city really to be successful. And so this is, I think, hopefully setting the stage for those next conversations and, and actions towards that goal.
How about the news media? How about the communication with the public through the news media and all that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure about the news media. But I do think, you know, people in the development industry or business owners, you know, certainly might be aware of, you know, which communities they may want to work with or not work with. And I think, you know, how you communicate your interest in economic development to the outside world is really important. I'm not sure exactly what that looks like for Sammamish, but. I'm not sure exactly what that looks like for Samamish, but, you know, if you have a certain goal and you want people to invest in your community, or open a hardware store, or whatever, you know, just simply putting that out there can be a great first step in communicating that, you know, this is of interest, and, you know, you're looking for like-minded partners that, you know, want to help the city achieve the vision, and if, you know, other developers don't share that vision, then maybe they're not, you know, the right fit for Samamish. So I do think that how you communicate to the outside world is an important piece of it.
I remember several years ago, I don't know if you recall, some of you, City of Renton had something on the TV and saying that they're ahead of the curve. I don't know if you remember that. That was a way of marketing the city, they're ahead of the curve, so we may have find a slogan that we can sell to the community.
I remember it, but to this day, I don't remember what it meant or how it, I mean, it made an impression, but...
What it means is that their city hall is at the curve on the highway, that's kind of funny. And if you look at their logo now, you know, they have like a football and a plane in it, because they have, you know, the Seahawks facility there. But yeah, we're actually working with Renton now in their economic development crew, so we are somewhat familiar with the city and their economic development program, and I think, you know, that's one you could look at as a case study for sure.
Jeff, I was wondering if you can share with us what has been feedback from Chamber of Commerce? Do they have any special requirements that puts their position as far as economic development? What do they want to see? What they wanted the city to do?
Yeah, I have not been as directly involved in some of those conversations, so perhaps Kelly could add, but I will just say, I think, you know, the first thing is just partnership and, you know, someone that they can work with locally on, you know, achieving like-minded goals. That's my sense. I don't know if any of the other city staff have anything more specific in terms of what the chamber has communicated to me.
Yeah, I can chime in. We worked, we did a little bit of work earlier last year of coordinating with the Chamber of Commerce and seeking some input, and we, actually Kelly and I went to a chamber meeting and, you know, kind of held an open discussion of what are, you know, concerns with the business community and what would we like to see. We also involve some of the chamber's members with our technical advisory group to again get some kind of focused feedback from business owners in Samamish to hear their thoughts. I would say generally, they're very supportive that the city is ready to take the step to put some focus on economic development. I also recall, we did, we previewed these goals with them in August or September, and they thought, you know, they felt they were appropriately sized for where the city's at in its economic development program and process. So we heard from the chamber, and as is listed as one of the policies, intend to, you know, build a stronger partnership going forward with the chamber, so.
Thank you. Chairman, I have a big list of the items that I'm going to pass it on to the staff, to pass it on to the consultants, some ideas similar to the one that we just talked about.
Great.
Thank you.
Who else? Go ahead, John.
So last year, when I looked at the Commercial Brokers Association data, there were like only four office-based commercial vacancies in the city, so I felt like that was a good sign that low vacancy meant high demand. Really happy to see the focus on the internal versus regional, and we're not going to steal any big-box stores or auto rows from Hewitt. And, you know, as we all know, the economic development game is somewhat of a zero-sum game, because if you grab a business from, to our city, that means that they didn't go to a different city, you know. The stakes get higher, of course, for auto dealerships and things like that. And, and looking at your figure-one relative land value, kind of feel like we're the kid at the end of the dead-end street, because we're not on a major thoroughfare, I-90, 520 or 405. So our focus, I think, is appropriate and a little bit different than Issaquah Redmond, more on the smaller scale. And a big shout-out to Jeff for mentioning the hardware store at least three times. That was on my holiday gift list. And then finally, a quick question, thought, you talked about work, the outline talks about work from home quite a bit, but accompanying that is, and I know that there's code already, I'm not familiar with it though, for home occupancy businesses, because they have as great or greater demand for things like broadband, not parking, but maybe a thought to mention those consultants that are operating a business out of their home. I think that's all I had. Thanks, the outline looks great, thanks.
Thank you.
Mike, did you?
Yeah, I'll jump in. Actually, first, a quick definition, actually about local business. So is Orange Theory considered a local business, where they're franchises, we're talking about small, truly Samamish-based? So just a quick, when you say local business, because it shows up a lot, just so we have a common understanding of what that is.
Yeah, I would say probably trending more towards a truly local business and not, you know, a large, a franchise of a larger company. I would, that's kind of more what I would associate it with, but, you know, there are some gradients of that, like there's some, you know, like local chains, you know, that maybe have 10 stores, but aren't maybe all over the country. I would, I would think kind of from that scale, more to the individual local businesses is more what I would, was thinking, yeah.
Okay, another definition, just, you talk about the goals, policies, strategies, and actions. So when we're looking at, it was in your presentation, and it's also in the packet, like the Economic Development One established a dedicated economic development program. Is that a policy? Is that a strategy? Are the actions underneath that, just to make sure that I understand?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, and we're going to work on a better graphic way to explain that, but yeah, this is the goal in the dark, and then below that, our strategies, our policies and strategies, but they're not specifically marked as such, so.
And then actions to be defined at what point?
Yeah, we, we have a list of actions that we have been working on, but they're not in the, as we said, I think we're moving towards a separate work program, so I can coordinate with the city staff about how we want to kind of structure that, but yeah, that would be a next, a next step.
Okay, I think overall, the document's really good, but the, the financial stability of Samamish, I can recall, we had discussions about keeping dollars in Samamish, and I would say what we want to do is keep dollars in Samamish and increase the spending of people who are in Samamish, so that's kind of one grouping, if you will. And then another one is to attract new dollars in, where people are actually coming into Samamish for some purpose, and we, it's going to be tough to compete against, you know, the Issquas and Redmonds, or, you know, the drinking that goes on in Woodinville. I said it in a very positive way. It happens. So when I read through this, I had that kind of a screen, if you will, and, you know, supporting the local businesses, clearly that's part of making sure we keep dollars in. And I think that, you know, the enhancement to the centers can help provide more opportunities to maybe increase the dollars, so that all made sense. I thought it was weaker in Samamish becoming like a destination for something. It talks about art and culture, there was some, someplace where it talked a little bit about leveraging the natural environment, and the reason I brought that up is I wondered if, you know, maybe one of these policies, I guess, shouldn't be to figure out what would be unique to Samamish that would actually bring people and dollars in. It didn't feel like there was enough of that, and I know that we don't know what the answer is yet, but to be, but to have some action to figure that out, what, how can we leverage our uniqueness or create some uniqueness? Because otherwise, we're still going to struggle to have the tax dollars, I think. So I found that to be a missing piece. So, I don't know, Jeff, you tried to jump in a couple of times, like rambled on, do you have a comment?
No, sorry, I just, I think it was a really good comment, and, you know, I guess my take on that is a couple of things. One, I think that's a longer, probably a longer-term goal, which I think is kind of what you were saying as well, but I also feel like, and I agree with you, I think there's some language we could add that could say this, but I think if we focus on the things that are most desired by the community, right, arts and culture, more retail, things to do, events, that are, you know, primarily first and foremost for the local community, will eventually, over time, I think, attract people from outside of the community, and so I think we could add a goal, a policy or a strategy that kind of says that, and I think that's, from my perspective, probably the best way to kind of achieve that, considering we're not going to have, you know, the one Costco, or, you know, some of the other big retail things that can have kind of a wider draw, but, you know, people always want to have a great experience, right? And so if we can provide that, I think we can attract people from outside the community as well. So we'll take a look at that and come up with a way to add that in.
Yeah, please, I mean, I recognize the need to do things that are actionable and maybe shorter terms, but this is part of the comprehensive plan, it is 20 years, so maybe in 20 years, we can be more of a destination for something. I have one or two other comments, and in the support local and grow local businesses, I guess I was looking for a little bit stronger sets of statements about make business easier to do, and that could be tax, that could be permitting, that could be sending out messaging that we're welcoming to businesses, which is, I think, covered a little bit elsewhere, and also, you know, workforce access, which is, I think, also touched a little bit elsewhere, but, but I felt like, you know, if we could be really clear that we want it to be easy to, for the local businesses to do business here, that would be great. And I have one or two other quick comments, so I don't know if you might want to mention anything about that, Jeff, or comment.
I think that's, that's a great suggestion, be happy to add that in, yeah, agreed.
Yeah, and then the last one, I guess that the two are somewhat related, and that's, I know that I've heard that the folks that own some of our centers right now aren't too open towards some of the, make the centers a broader center. And in ED 4.1, we talk about maintain full range of businesses and so forth. I guess that bringing those two together is, how much could we, like, actually do on some of these? So it's nice to say we want to have a retail store, it's nice to say we want to, you know, maintain a full range of these businesses, but we do need the business partners, and, you know, there's, there's only so much the city can do. So I guess that's just a caution in terms of how these are stated, being clear that this is stuff the city can control, and recognizing that, you know, there's some vacant space in Klahani right now, and that's because the owners are wanting to do that for some reason, you know, and the residents want to have a restaurant there, and there's no restaurant. So I don't know how to solve that one, but I think it's a caution for what's put in here in terms of being realistic or not.
Yeah, maybe, maybe there's a better way that we could say, you know, rephrase it or something, but, you know, I think part of that is calibrating the incentives for people to make the investments that, you know, the community would like to see, right? So, you know, the owners of the mixed-use centers may not be enticed to do that now, but over time, you know, through the sub-area planning process, investments in infrastructure, partnerships with the chamber and others, you know, things could come together, and I think, you know, there's also a number of ways that cities can be proactive in some of these activities and ways that you're not now, and I think, you know, we could suggest some of those, either through updates to the goals and policies, or in the action part of the work program, and maybe even provide some case studies. So I think, you know, part of it is figuring out what the city's role is in this, and sort of how aggressive or how many resources you want to put towards it. So I do think there is some, some more specific stuff that we might be able to identify, so it doesn't seem like we're just relying on the private sector to have a grocery store because we say we want it in the comp plan, so I totally understand your point, and I think we can take another look at that as well.
Yeah, and the last thing is, and this is tongue-in-cheek, but maybe we could put like gates up so that when people want to drive off the plateau, go to a restaurant in Redmond, that's, they're like, maybe they're charged extra for that trip or something, you know, a little tax instead of that way. So thinking out of the box. Anyways, Mark can't be the only person who says something that's funny. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Thanks for your comments, really good.
Siti, anything? Asham, feel like jumping in?
Thank you for, for all the information you shared, and it's definitely a very good presentation, and the packet that I reviewed at home, I, I agree with the comments that my colleagues here shared. Infrastructure is definitely a big challenge for us to expand and to grow and to attract more businesses, but honestly, my mind keeps going back to the town center, that that's, that's where we can implement a lot of these good ideas. I haven't seen a plan, a development plan for that side, but I know that you have, you have a huge property out there, and there's a huge potential for what can go in that, in that, in those parcels, that can bring revenue and can solve a lot of the things that we're talking about here.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely agree. It is a definite opportunity to expand our retail space, you know, potentially bring in, you know, a partner, and again, I think this is one of the reasons why it's on our work plan this year, is to amend that plan and code, one of the objectives, so ties in very nicely.
So I had a couple of little comments, Jeff. One is more detail-oriented, but there's the slide, the page that has the, it's got the population and the graphic with the city outline, and the arrows in and the arrows out. There's two places on that graphic, and this is, this was a public comment that I'm just surfacing from someone else, and I do agree, there's two places in that where the phrase "infrastructure to support business," and I'm paraphrasing that a little bit, but it's included in there, and I've heard the word "infrastructure" from a couple of people in their comments here. It might be good to do a little bit more describing what that means. I think the way it is in here is appropriate, but it's very interpretable, you know.
Yeah, okay.
So I just take a quick look at that. That's a very specific thing. My other comment is very much more, actually, first I wanted to suggest, put it on the whiteboard for the future, but maybe as an action item, when we get someday into the actionable stuff here, you know, the, I've heard the comment before, and I agree, there's a perception that the people who own the centers that we have, the main centers, are sort of blind or deaf to what we want as a community, but, but I would just challenge that in saying that I don't know that we have a good conduit for communication, so maybe as an action item, we should suggest some form of the Chamber of Commerce and the city establish that communication with the, you know, maybe it's three primary landowners that we're talking about, or center, you know, real estate owners, and those can be real estate investment trusts or whoever, you know, it might be difficult, but the truth is, if we don't have that line of communication, you know, maybe they don't care, and they don't know, and they don't know, and they don't care, so I think that could be added to, from Mike's comment, to an action list in the future. The last thing, and this is going to be one of those, you know, I'm pointing out a potential problem and don't have a good solution to suggest, but I worry a little bit that when we talk about things in the city, and when I say "we," I mean the council and the Planning Commission and other commissions, and the staff and others, there are certain things that we're always good at thinking about and folding into the conversation. So as an example, the environment, and how the things that we're talking about affect the environment, or obviously our budget and our staff resources, we always talk about that, and you would say, of course we do. I think we've gotten better skills at talking about DEIB and how that has influenced things. So how do we somehow create something within this piece of the comp plan that says, hey, it's important that this be a consideration in many of the things that we talk about within the city, whether that's, you know, frankly, transportation, infrastructure planning, you know, how does that affect economic development? Does it affect economic development? There's just a number of things that, that I think actually are interrelated to economic development, and it should be a topic that gets discussed, but I'm worried that if we don't somehow suggest that and create some expectation of that... But I'm worried that if we don't somehow suggest that and create some expectation of that, that the economic element of the comp plan is going to be, kind of, become a thing that gets set on the shelf and not talked about when it should be. You know, it gets brought out once a year and reviewed or something. I think that it just would be great if we could find a way to emphasize the need to fold this into the rest of the work that we do and the things that we talk about, because it could have, it could be a real game changer in some cases. It could create greater emphasis to take action in some cases or influence how we choose to spend the resources that we have. But if we don't think about it and make it a priority and pay attention, they won't get talked about in many cases. So again, I'm pointing out a problem and not a solution, but I think it's worth at least considering a way to make it a, an intentional priority that gets communicated to future city councils, future commissions, future staff that are working on things, that this is a truly a priority that needs to be part of any planning that we do. So there, that's kind of high-minded thinking, but I do think that these kind of things often have the risk of being put on the shelf and not talked about.
Yeah, no, I, I share your concern and I like your charge for us to kind of take a look at that again. We've certainly been thinking about it, and, you know, maybe we haven't completely nailed it yet, so we'll go back and give some thought to that. And, you know, because you're right, it is really important. People, I think, with economic development can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. And I think what you're talking about is showing how it's really connected to some of these foundational things, right? Like, you can't have a successful business if you can't get there, right? Or infrastructure, we think of, oh, we're just paying for something so someone can do something, but it actually could be a huge investment and, you know, reap a lot of potential benefits economically and, and in other factors for the city. So, yeah, we'll work on a way to, to come, to kind of better communicate that. And, you know, I completely agree with your sentiment there.
I would just close that comment by saying, I think that people in Samamish, and this is in this plan here or in this document, people in Samamish have economic power. No, 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 probably a better way to say that. And so they tend to take this category of topic for granted. And I think that that's a very risky thing to do because it's very vital to our community as it continues to grow to have a diverse tax base and a strong economic plan and a, and a city that supports that. And so having a plan is a good first step, and then making sure that that gets used is really important to me at least. Anyone else? Sayad, did you have something else you want to follow up on?
I just want to follow up with a comment that Mike brought up as far as the incentives. Jeff, apparently you've been working with other jurisdictions. Have you come across any jurisdiction that they have created way of taking advantage of some tax incentives or subsidies or foregoing with the fees that the city charges for permits and so forth? Have you come across some ideas that you can look at it as part of economic development to entice businesses to come to the city?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a really a long list of potential strategies. I think first is calibrating your land use plan and your zoning so that development is actually feasible economically. So, you know, maybe when the city goes to do the subarea planning, there's an economist such as, you know, similar to a person that's on our team for the town center, to be able to look at that and make sure that it's calibrated. You know, there's, there's things like the multifamily tax exemption, which many cities use, but that's specifically to housing. There is some, you know, lighter forms of tax increment financing, which can be used to finance infrastructure and pay for it over time with increased tax revenues. There are streamlined permitting that can happen for certain types of uses or projects. You know, fee reductions are definitely something. You tend to see that more for things like affordable housing, but definitely another tactic. But, you know, I think it's also broader, just, you know, somewhat the culture of the city and, you know, how you kind of emphasize and work with, with private entities as well. So, yeah, we definitely have experience working with communities that have implemented a wide array of incentives, and that's definitely a big part of our effort in the town center, which could inform some of the strategies in the, the other subareas as well.
And those cities that you said that they have implemented have been successful as far as bringing more businesses to their cities?
Yeah, I mean, I think Redmond's probably, you know, maybe one of the best examples that I can think of. When I first moved to the Seattle area in 2008, was in grad school, and our fresh, or not freshmen, because I was in grad school, my first year studio was doing a project at Redmond. I remember them bringing us there, and they're like, oh, this is downtown Redmond. And I remember thinking, wow, this isn't what I thought, you know, would be downtown Redmond at the time, being the home of Microsoft. But, you know, they made some tremendously huge investments. First, they decoupled their one-way streets in downtown. They developed Cleveland Street, which is kind of their main walkable street in downtown. That's been designated National APA Grade Street. They invested in the cross, or the Redmond Central Connector, which is the Rails to Trails project that goes through downtown. It's got public art in it as well, and I think they use it to host a variety of events. They then invested significant, I think I heard even up to like $100 million on their downtown park, which has been very successful. They have tons of new development, mixed-use development, redevelopment of their older shopping centers. They're getting light rail stations that are coming in. And, you know, I think they're a great example of a city that's had a pretty strong vision and has been willing to invest in it and now is, is really paying off for them. I've been involved in their last few downtown parking studies, and some of the earlier ones we did really didn't show a parking problem per se, even though there was that perception. And we noticed a very significant change in the data when we did this for them just a few years ago. And in particular, the area around Old Town, which encompasses their downtown park and kind of their main walkable commercial area, showed a significant uptick in occupancy such that we had to recommend some new strategies for them. And, you know, the parking problem is actually really an indicator in some ways of success. So I think that's a good example, you know? Kirkland's, you know, has a, a kind of more of an older downtown in some ways. But I think, you know, with Totem Lake and some of the other things that have happened there, you know, they certainly are, are looking pretty strong economically and have a very vibrant downtown. So those are two, two communities that I can think of. You mentioned Renton, you know, they, they probably have done also some good things that, you know, the city may want to look at, particularly around affordable housing as well. So those are, those are a couple kind of off the top of my head that I could provide.
Thank you. I feel obligated that I should just make the statement here for the record that I think those are good examples, but Samamish needs to find its own path. And I don't want someone who watches or listens to this meeting to perceive that we're trying to be Redmond, because we're certainly not, I don't think. Or Kirkland, we can't be Kirkland because we're not Kirkland. So I just want to make sure that, that we're going to have to find our own path for what's right for Samamish. So if anyone is listening in on this and is, is running over here with a pitchfork right now, we are Samamish, and we're definitely going to find our own way to what the community wants and what the various councils and, and others believe is right for Samamish. Okay, anybody else have comments or questions? Looks like no, so thank you, Jeff. This is, to me, a super important topic. I'm glad it's getting put into the comp plan, and I hope we can find ways to make it a priority in the future. Thanks for the presentation and the, and the discussion.
Yeah, thank you all very much. Appreciate all the feedback, and we'll follow up and incorporate it into the next draft.
All right, great. Let's move on to agenda-related public comment for this evening. So any public comments related to this particular topic? Or I suppose if you'd like to comment on our heavy work plan and, and how awesome we are, that's okay too, but I'm not expecting that. Do we have any, anyone for public comment?
Yep, I see one hand raised that just went down, but Ms. Victor, I'm assuming you want to comment? I'm going to go ahead and promote you to panelist.
Hi, this is Mary Victor. Thanks for seeing my hand. It's a little trouble with my window tonight. Been in Samamish 23 years. First of all, I just think with the work plan and everything that everybody is doing, we have really great staff, there's a lot of projects going on, but I think with all the boards and the activity and the recommendations that you make, we can do what needs to happen in 2024, but it is super important. So it's good to get input and spend time planning. A couple of things on the Kaizen event that Kelly Hilde had talked about. Didn't know what that was, but I looked it up. It's K-A-I-Z-A-N, and it's just a way to do good feedback, as she mentioned it. The critical areas is not a light lift, it's a heavy one. And we do need to get things not to happen in critical areas so they can happen in the centers. And when there's more things happening in the centers, you'll have better economic development and vitality. I did like her use of the octopus for transfer of development rights tying in. Transfer of development rights is very important, and it's not just working with the King County Interlocal Agreement, which is an ILA. It's working with the city code. Like, in one place it says, oh, you can be ascending site if you're erosion hazard or a couple others, but it doesn't say you can if you're a landslide hazard. It should be any geo-hazard. So there are things that need to specifically change in code. And the, the program that does exist is just stalled because there were 75 credits available. 22 were bought, 20 of them have to be used in town center before other ones can get used. And since those haven't been used yet, it's stalled. So we do have a program, but it's not functional. But I think it is, I think the way that the staff is scheduling, it is very good and appropriate. I wanted to talk a little bit on Jeff, Jeff Arango's document. I like the layout. I'm sitting at my computer, and when he does his presentation, I have a touchscreen so I can open it up. I have to actually zoom in to 180% to be able to read the text on the left when he's got those colored pie charts in the middle. The font looks like it's a little squished and a little bit spaced, and when there's a capital next to a little, it kind of looks funny. And I don't know for readability that the, the goals or whatever the ED is, that that should be all capitalization. That's a little bit odd to do. Maybe it matches the other documents you've done, but that just struck me tonight. And I did find the little print was hard to read on the left, and then on the right, it was easier to read when they were the individual goals, they were fine. So I don't know if you want to look at that. Also, I do have red-green color blindness in my family on the guy's side. And if you keep using the green and red colors to differentiate, there are people that can't actually see the different colors. So I don't know if there's a, a third color you could use other than the red. I think the green and the blue look nice and just, I don't know, gray or something. So you can distinguish through the different colors, and that you can also distinguish the density in the pie chart areas. Otherwise, I thought what people said is really good. I did, as you know, I grew up in Bozeman, Montana, and I still do their meetings. They have an Economic Vitality Board and Committee that's been working for a while. If you can get one house out of 10 market rates for affordable, that's actually really good. And I know that's in the town center code, which, I believe, Kelly Hilde has mentioned a few times. But one thing they use in Bozeman, they don't use it a lot, and there's not a lot of money for it, but it's called tax increment financing. So the TIF or TIF funds is tax increment financing is a way for certain districts, which are areas of the city there, to use property tax revenue to fund new development. It works because they separate the taxable value into a base amount and an increment value so that the revenue from the base value continues to go to regular taxing in the jurisdiction. But the taxes, as they increase over the years, the growth, the increment, go to the TIF to pay for new development activities within the TIF district. So anyway, I just thought that was a creative way to say, hey, if you're doing new things, you are going to pay more taxes, but that should go to building more things so you kind of are springboarding yourself forward. So there's probably other things. I didn't have time to look through their documents, but I know they have a lot of meetings and they, they have really good staff and they come up with really good ideas. So sometimes looking to other, they also have a good climate plan if anybody from sustainability is interested in looking at that. Otherwise, I don't need my full seven minutes. I yield the remainder of my time, and thanks for letting me speak, and a great meeting tonight. Good luck with all the topics.
Thank you, Ms. Victor. Mr. Stigney, I'll go ahead and promote you to panelist.
Good evening, funding commissioners, staff, consultants. Paul Stigney here, Samamish. Learned a lot. Enjoyed hearing about some of the topics that I hadn't known were coming back, like the Transportation Master Plan. I agree with the, you know, with the approach to figure out critical areas, land uses and town center before the sending and receiving on the TDR. So good comments. There is a lot in play. I felt that the staff at the city and consultants did a good job presenting a lot of information tonight. Very thoughtful questions, so I won't repeat what those were said, but I don't have too much to add. But I do want to piggyback a little bit on a comment that the, I think it was Commissioner Mark Baughman, who talked about making a priority and important to discuss economics. And there's another issue, and you've heard me talk about it over time, but that is the way housing supplies work for life, and they actually influence everything. And maybe some of you have heard of the, well, I'm sure you've all, I should say that. Many of you have likely heard of the Simon and Garfunkel song, "The Sounds of Silence." Take a look at a cover that was done by a heavy metal band. And I'm not a heavy metal fan. But they did "The Sound of Silence" in a way that is just, you, you have to see for yourself the overall power this song has. It's done by a band called Disturbed. And they do a great job at incredible "The Sound of Silence." But I think the silence in Samamish has been wanting to talk about what is the right mix of housing to meet lifetime and legacy needs? And that causes a lot of fear and concern, so it doesn't get talked about. But I think there's just tremendous upsides with very little downside for right sizing housing in town center now, other centers in a bit, keeping the pressure off the neighborhoods that can turn the wheels with more advantages than economic development by probably a order of magnitude. Economic development's hugely important, but right sizing housing supplies citywide is of even greater importance. So take a look at, I've mentioned this before, but take a look at the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force public comments in July and August, and it outlines the whole plan. And it's real and something that I believe we should take into account and factor in appropriately with some change to town center now, plan for the other centers in the future, and then tie all the other parts to the plan to these optimally adjusted housing supplies that meet local. And Mark Baughman talked about local. It's not about attracting and enlarging the size of the number of people who move to Samamish. It's about retaining those folks who live and work here now over cycle of life and for future generations. So it's an internal issue. It's sort of filling in a circle of housing that has gaps. So anyway, I would just suggest that that is an important topic, one that has been pretty much avoided in 20 years in Samamish to really get accurate information and honestly compare consequences. And whatever way the community goes after doing those things, that's how it's going to be. But that hasn't happened, and we're missing a big opportunity to right-size and seek outcomes that can add enrichments over time holistically with very de minimis adverse effects, if any. Okay, appreciate the opportunity to speak. Have a good evening. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. There are no more hands raised.
All right, thanks, Evan. Before we finish tonight, anything else from staff? Nope. Again, welcome to our new commissioner, Asham. Welcome. I would also just encourage everybody to pay attention, especially to the calendar now. It's really important that we keep track of, if you're not going to be able to be here, let us know. And I would also just say, if you're caught in traffic, if you're going to be late, if you got sick, let us know as well, because there are several touchpoints along the way here where we really need to know who's going to be here and make sure we have the right group here. Okay? So keep up with it, and I think that's it. So would someone move to adjourn? Second, it's been moving to second, the way you adjourned for this evening. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.